Counting down. Five, four, three, two, and one.
Good evening. I'm calling this meeting to order at 7:32 PM. Welcome to the City Council meeting of June 15th, 2023. So glad to see so many people here for the budget. We really appreciate the turnout. Right, exactly. You all have to stay. Especially the children. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. City Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Yes.
Councilmember Lentz.
Here.
Councilmember Mackin.
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
And Mayor Davis.
Here. Moving on to adoption of the agenda. Do I have a first and a second to adopt the agenda as it stands?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote please.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz.
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
And Mayor Davis.
Aye. Well, we will now move on to oral communications number one. Is there a member of the public wishing to make public comment on an item that's not on the agenda?
Madam Mayor, I have no written comments.
Okay, we will now move on to awards and presentations. Item B. Commending the U8 Little League Champions, Brisbane Rattlers. Players, do you want to stand? So we can honor you. On behalf of the City of Brisbane on this date, June 15th, 2023, I commend Rob Larson, head coach of the Brisbane Rattlers for the time and dedication you have gave to the Brisbane Rattlers. Congratulations on winning the U8 2023 South San Francisco Pony Baseball Little League Championships. You make Brisbane so very, very proud, and I commend you in all of your hard work and dedication. Coach Rob, would you like to say a few words? Yes, please approach.
Oh, he's got the big trophy.
Wow, look at that.
That's ours for a year.
Nice.
Unless we can get it back. Keep it, let's just say.
Half my height.
I just want to thank you, thank the city for providing us with the resources and Ricardo, all the uniforms, materials, and location and support to be able to have a nice program like this. I grew up in town, and it was not nearly as organized back as a kid. So it's really nice to have that. And then couldn't do it without the support of dozens of coaches. And then, and then, of course, all the kids. You guys tried so hard this year. You worked really hard, and I'm proud of all of them. And yeah, I don't know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think the city at this time would like to take a photo. So we'll let Caroline lead the arrangement here.
Maybe come over here.
Yeah, line up in front of this council giant. And then we'll have like two rows of the players and the coaches in the back. And then the council can stand. I'm gonna move this so it's out of your way.
Here, I wanna hold the trophy.
Sure.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, of course, I'm not gonna give it back. Oh, I'm hitting the microphone, okay.
Can you get in there?
Can you, you wanna, yeah, move in?
Behind the tall guy.
And then sit there, you have a lot of people around.
Don't feel pressured to stay. You will not offend any of us. Although we have a riveting meeting planned. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Congratulations.
Bye, you guys.
Bye. Congratulations.
That's it.
You're welcome, congratulations.
Cute at that age.
I know, right?
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Oh, I'll shake that.
Shake the glove.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
See you later.
Bye, thanks.
Bye, Rob. Bye-bye.
Congratulations.
Bye.
Bye.
See you later.
Ah, and that cleared the room.
Hi. Where's our audience?
I'm sure they're going somewhere for cake somewhere.
Pizza party.
We did, for a brief moment.
So we will now move on to item C. Proclaiming July 2023 as National Parks and Recreation Month. Designation of July 2023 as Park and Recreation Month, whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the City of Brisbane. And whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks. And whereas Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being, and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's. And whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for sports, open space trails, swimming pools, and other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. And whereas Parks and Recreation is a leading provider of healthy meal services. And whereas Parks and Recreation programming and education activities such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development. And whereas Parks and Recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas Parks and Recreation is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And whereas Parks and Recreation is essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change. And whereas our parks and our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the US House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And whereas the City of Brisbane recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources. Now, therefore, be it resolved that July is recognized as Park and Recreation Month in the City of Brisbane. Parks and Recreation Director Norrie Leek is here to accept the proclamation. I'll come this way.
Yeah, I know. Do you want us all to?
I think we're all posing right, yeah. Thank you. Is there anything you would like to say?
No, I'm, I'm so glad that the kids and the families could be here tonight so that you can see their smiling faces and how proud their parents are and the impact that Parks and Recreation has on our residents every single day. So thank you all so much for your ongoing support. It's very much appreciated.
Yes.
Thanks, Norrie.
Okay. We are now moving on to the Juneteenth proclamation, item D. City of Brisbane celebrating Juneteenth, 2023. Whereas on June 19th, 1865, Union General Gordon Granger read federal orders in Galveston, Texas, that all previously enslaved people in Texas were free. This came more than two months after the end of the Civil War and two and a half years after President Abraham Lincoln had issued the Emancipation Proclamation, freeing slaves in the southern states. And whereas on June 17th, 2021, President Biden signed the Juneteenth National Independence Day Act, making Juneteenth the 12th federal holiday. And whereas we join the greater community to observe Juneteenth, to remember the moral stain and terrible role, terrible toll of slavery on our country and long legacy of systemic racism, inequality, and inhumanity. And whereas we can work toward equality and justice and celebrate the centuries of struggle, courage, and hope that have brought us to progress and possibilities throughout our country by abolitionists and educators, civil rights advocates and lawyers, courageous activists, public officials, and everyday Americans. And whereas we must recognize that African Americans, among other people of color, have shouldered a disproportionate burden of loss through systemic racism that still undermines our founding ideals and collective prosperity. And whereas this nation was founded on the principle that every individual has infinite dignity and worth. And the City Council calls upon the people of this municipality to build an economy that brings everyone along in the name of freedom and through the power of community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council hereby observes Juneteenth this 19th day of June 2023. Let us celebrate Juneteenth as the day when all Americans were liberated and created equal. It should be a day to reflect, learn, and grow as a community and as a people. Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Accountability Committee Member Anna Dennis is here to accept the proclamation. Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
If I may?
Absolutely.
Okay. First of all, I want to thank you very much for, you know, we've really had a lot of fun on the Idea Committee, and I really appreciate being a part of that. And this, I think, really is a reflection of the inclusiveness and how we've made great strides, you know, not just in Brisbane, but as a country. And I really appreciate accepting this proclamation today. And I just wanted to say that, you know, I found a really nice quote that I wanted to share. You know, one of the things that we know is that no one's free until everybody's free. And so, you know, I think we make great strides toward that, and the Idea Committee definitely is putting their, their mark there. But Obama said, "Juneteenth has never been a celebration of victory or an acceptance of the way things are. It's a celebration of progress," which is what we're doing today. "It's an affirmation that despite the most painful parts of our history, change is possible, and there is still so much work to do." So thank you for leading the charge with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank for, thank you for your service on Idea Committee.
Thank you.
We are now moving on to consent calendar, items E through I. Do I have a first and a second to approve those items?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote please.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz.
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
And Mayor Davis.
Aye. Moving on to old business, item J. Consider approval of city appointment to the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency, BASCA, and Bay Area Regional Water System Financing Authority, RFA, boards. And I believe City Manager Clay Holstein has a staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor. Excuse me, apology. We, I think, had this conversation at a previous council meeting and looked at some potential candidates. We have an internal candidate, Jerry Flanagan, who I think you know, who is, runs our water and sewer utilities. And we believe that he would be a very good appointment, especially on the GBMID side. Not that we're making any announcement on Randy tonight, but, you know, there will be a point when Randy is ready to, to move on, and he's been our staff representative from BASCA to BASCA. And we think this will be a good continuity of, of, in terms of somebody being appointed to, to that position.
Yes.
Excellent suggestion.
Council questions? No. Okay, public comment?
There are none, Madam Mayor.
Okay, council discussion? I hear one, support and support?
Excellent comment. Excellent choice, sorry.
Do we need to, to vote on this?
Do we need a?
Or is this just an advisor?
No, no, you do need to vote on that.
Okay.
You need a motion in this.
I make a motion to appoint Jerry Flanagan as our BASCA representative.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Roll call vote please.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz.
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
And Mayor Davis.
Aye. New business, item K. Consider approval of pilot program for expanded GOTWHEELS program. And I believe... Oh, Caroline's gonna give the staff report, okay.
I am. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. I'm pleased to be here tonight to present the possibility of expanding a program that is used by eligible Brisbane residents 70 and older called GOTWHEELS, which is managed by the nonprofit Peninsula Family Service. I'll note that their chief executive officer, Heather Cleary, and their chief programs officer, Charles Hanson, are here with us tonight via Zoom. So just for some background, in late 2022, city staff was informed by SAM Trans of a call for projects to help fund the free midday community shuttle in the Bay Shore, Brisbane area, which is also referred to as the Bay Shore, Brisbane Senior Shuttle. Including this shuttle in the call for projects for fiscal years '23, '24, and '24, '25 was based on recommendations from the Peninsula Shuttle Study adopted by the SAM Trans Board in September of 2021. Among other things, it proposed that SAM Trans and Caltrans no longer sponsor shuttles and that Brisbane's midday shuttle was the last shuttle being sponsored by SAM Trans in 2023. In speaking more with SAM Trans staff and reviewing ridership reports, it was discovered that the cost to maintain service levels for the next two years would be $151,000 in fiscal year '23, '24, and $155,000 in '24, '25, and that the average cost per shuttle rider was $55 per day. The call for projects required the city, as a project sponsor, to contribute 25% or approximately $40,000 for this first two-year funding cycle. Based on previous shuttle performance and cost, the city has decided not to apply for funding for this route in the next call for projects. Since January, city staff has been researching alternative transportation services for our older adults. And although they don't directly replace the shuttle, they do serve as a viable, secure, and personalized transportation option. So city staff was first contacted in, actually, I should say that the mayor at the time, Councilmember O'Connell, was first contacted by Peninsula Family Service in 2020 to share with residents about a new Caltrans-funded GOTWHEELS program. Thirteen residents signed up for the program as we shared that information out, which five since July of 2022 are still active. GOTWHEELS members can arrange for a $5 one-way cab ride, where they've partnered with Sarah Yellow Cab to provide on-demand, 24 hours a day, seven days a week service. Each month, participants are able to take up to six one-way trips or three round trips for only $5 per one-way ride. Destinations must be within the geographic area, which is 12 cities from Brisbane to the coast and down 101 through Burlingame and San Francisco International Airport. And I'll note that on March 27th, 2023, Peninsula Family Service staff closed the GOTWHEELS waitlist due to capacity being reached. And we relayed this to our seniors and posted it on our website. They plan to reopen that waitlist on July 1st. So some feedback from the users. Over the last six months, I've spoken with seniors on Wednesdays at the senior lunches and on the days they've gathered at the Sunrise Room to talk about the various transportation options that serve Brisbane, such as GOTWHEELS. There's also a shuttle service out of the PJCC in Foster City that goes all the way down to Stanford Medical Facilities in Palo Alto, and our very own Brisbane Village Helping Hands Group, which offers transportation services to its members. Those that use GOTWHEELS find it to be very convenient as its door-to-door service. They can call to schedule a ride at any time. They use up most, if not all, of their rides. And those that aren't yet members of GOTWHEELS express wanting to become one once the waitlist opened. So the one-year pilot program before you is $12,000 for the next fiscal year, July 1, 2023, to June 30, 2024. And that would ensure that Brisbane residents are able to come off of the waitlist and receive a membership card. And so if approved, they would have that ability starting July 1st. Once again, I'd like to just thank Heather and Charles, who are on Zoom, and also to the program manager, Sherry Carol Moreno, who I've been in contact with about this potential partnership of expanding the GOTWHEELS program in Brisbane. And with that, I'll take any questions that you have.
I have questions. So moving the people off of the waitlist, plus the five that are active, that would bring it to 15 total participants for the $12,000. Okay. And so it's not going to be open, really, to anyone who's just finding out about the program. It's only going to be to people who are already on the waitlist, or can new people join the waitlist, and then it's a lottery? How does that work?
I know of just one person on the waitlist from Brisbane, but they're gonna look at who's on the waitlist from Brisbane and be able to give them that membership.
Okay, so there are conceivably new people who, let's say, are listening to our meeting tonight, hearing about it, who can put their names on the waitlist, who have a chance to be selected for this program. And then in the staff report, it said that there were 13 initial participants.
Yeah, since 2020.
And then five, only five were active. So what happens if, like, we allocate a $12,000 budget and people no longer become active? Then do spaces, it doesn't seem like spaces open on a rolling basis, or like, how is that budget, does that budget roll over? Unused budget roll over to the next year, or how does that work?
Well, the program manager is very good at reaching out to those that may be on the waitlist. So as people move out of town, that's why there's that 13 to 5. They did a call of all their active members last year. And so that's why, and so people were able to, but not right now because it's closed.
Right.
So it's still the five.
Okay. And you said in the past, the five that were active tended to use all six of their rides per month? Okay. And, you know, obviously, tonight, we're discussing the budget, and we have probably some difficult decisions to make. But I had a chance to chat with the city attorney right before this me, I mean, city manager right before this meeting, and he indicated that even though there's a $12,000 expenditure here, the city's technically saving money as opposed to the alternative that we were financing.
Yeah, it certainly is a big savings over what we would have had to pay if we did the shuttle, if we competed for the shuttle cost. It is an expense beyond what we had been paying because we hadn't been paying with the shuttle that was supported through SAM Trans.
Okay. Councilmember O'Connell?
So do we, with this program and this expenditure, do we have a specific number of Brisbane residents that can enroll?
Well, you have to be 70 or older, which is about 10% of the Brisbane population currently.
But do we have a limit of 10 people, 15 people, 30 people? How many Brisbane residents can, will this program be able to benefit?
It's up to 10 new members and then supporting the existing five.
Okay, so a maximum of 15 members of our community would be allowed?
Yeah, they told me up to 10 for this amount.
Pardon?
They told me up to 10 for the $12,000.
10 new people?
10 new people.
So up to 15 people?
Correct.
For this amount? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And just doing some quick math. If 15 people took six rides a month. Here. Oh, she's got it. Oh, I don't know if this looks like my math. Well, if it was 10, if it was 15 people taking six rides a month, right? 90 rides a month.
Divided by 1,000.
90 rides a month times 12. Months in a year, 1,080. And then 12,000 divided by 1,080. You know, we're looking at like $11 a ride, plus they pay $5. So we're subsidizing, what, 200%, I guess? I don't know. We're subsidizing, we're subsidizing, you know, double the price. And they're, we're giving two-thirds, they're giving a third. We're giving $11, they're giving like $5.
Yeah, when I talked to Sherry, they have a cost that's increased over the last year. So for them, it's a cost of, I believe, and maybe Heather or Charles would like to clarify.
Perhaps I could clarify a bit. So the average ride is well over $20. Some could be much bigger if they're going from... But we, what we do is we could have more than 15 members of Brisbane. We will still have our existing waitlist. We're just gonna be able to prioritize 10 new members onto our waitlist. So we'll have at least those members of Brisbane prioritized. And then everybody else could join, as with the other cities, as they work through the waitlist, if there's more. In addition, if there's more members from Brisbane on the waitlist, we'll reach out, so we're in communication, so we understand, you know, so you understand where all the members of your community are with regards to this program. Because it is such a valuable program to reduce loneliness, isolation, and increase opportunities.
Go ahead.
If I may, so the five people that are on the program, the additional 10 would just be waitlisted and not necessarily be included in the program at this time? Is that correct?
No, those would be prioritized to be included as soon, this month or next month, as soon as we could get them in once approval, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So our overall capacity for service in the program will increase by 10 individuals.
In our portion of the program or in your program overall?
Overall.
So with all the communities that you serve?
So both, in your, it will increase both Brisbane and overall. But it, so not necessarily in other cities. They will be in the existing program. We'll just be able to prioritize 10 additional residents as they come in. And we might have to do some outreach and work with your office, with the city to do that, to make sure people understand the opportunity here.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I would like to ask what the eligibility requirements are for someone to be enrolled in the program or to be on the waitlist?
Just 70 and above.
So there's no income requirement, no?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
That is correct, there's no income requirement.
Okay, thank you.
And I think there are also, like, Sarah Yellow Cab has different modes of their transportation. If you needed to have, say, a wheelchair or something to come with you, then they have different transportation options to serve those needs.
Yeah, if I may.
Yeah.
First of all, I just want to thank you, Caroline.
First of all, I just want to thank you, Caroline, because I know that you've worked so hard on this. This is something that you've been, you know, trying to advocate for our seniors for quite a long time. I know you reached out to me and trying to come up with, you know, various ways to provide mobility for our seniors that don't have it. And you know what I really like about this program is that if, you know, there's a senior who doesn't have family or doesn't have friends that they feel comfortable with, you know, to reach out to, to help them, this provides that mobility in independence, right? You know, and just thinking of my own mom, I mean, she's still driving, she's 91, she's probably drive it till she's 100, but, you know, she, she just, you know, having her independence is so important to her, and that's what, to me, this program does. And so I appreciate you bringing it to us and advocating for Brisbane to be part of the pilot program. You know, I was at a commute.org meeting this morning, and, you know, I mentioned it to the board, and some of the board members were, who knew of this, you know, were really positive about, you know, about this service. So thank you for bringing it to Brisbane.
Cliff, did you have any questions?
No, just, I just wanted to highlight, you know, the hard work from our staff.
Okay.
Person.
Does anyone else have questions?
I do.
Okay.
So, so basically, if it's $12,000 a year with 15 people, it's $800 per year per person enrolled with a maximum of six trips per month? Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
It's a good deal. Given our options and how it would leave our seniors who didn't have anything else, this is a really good deal for us financially, and it's obviously a very good deal for them financially.
$11 a ride, about.
It's.
Approximately.
It's a no-brainer to me. Thank you.
You're welcome. So if the ride is normally 20, and there's 11 or so dollars coming from the city and $5 coming from the resident, where is that extra $4 coming from?
We also receive funding from Measure K and Supervisor Canada as well as MTC.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I, I just, I think one thing that bothers me here is the vetting, because if there's a waitlist and someone's aggressive and they get on the list, and maybe, you know, they're on a fixed income, but there are some on even very, very low fixed incomes, I would like to see something vetting. We know about our Brisbane residents, we have them on subsidies with water and sewer, that they be given some sort of a priority, because this may be an extreme hardship for some, and to others, it's a convenience that helps them have extra money for other things.
I would also say that I think Brisbane Village Helping Hands has a really good idea of what, because their number one request is rides. And there are, you know, your mom is driving, right? But there are a lot of seniors who can't drive at all, and they have to get to the doctor regularly. They may have injections or, you know, need to see their doctor on a very regular basis, and so they really rely, right now, many of them are relying on Brisbane Village Helping Hands to get to those critical appointments. So is there anything with, is there anything that would prohibit us from creating some type of guidelines around need?
Or at least identifying certain people?
Well, there may be somebody that has a really big need that we don't know about.
Right.
So, you know, they might be able to find out about the program through the Star or through the Helping Hands or the Sunrise Room or something, but I think that having a fixed income, you know, and maybe having limited resources to secure a ride, like no family around. I know that there was some very good criteria that the county established through the meal program that happened during COVID.
Mm-hmm.
So maybe that's something that could be replicated. What was that program called? Does anyone remember?
No, but I know what you mean.
Where local businesses cooked meals and delivered them directly. Heather, do you have any comment on, have any other cities come up with maybe more stringent protocols on eligibility?
Um, not at this time, and I think the program you're referring to is the Great Plates Program.
Yes, yes.
That's it.
Great Plates.
That's it.
There we go. But so with this addition, we intend to serve all the residents of Brisbane on the waitlist. So regardless of their income, you know, if there's more that come on, we can communicate that to you so you make sure, and we can prioritize if necessary, we can have that conversation, but we don't do that currently, but we would be open to further discussion.
But there's only, you mentioned there's only one person currently on the waitlist, right?
That I know of.
Is that your understanding, Heather?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
It could grow tomorrow.
And, and you know, working with the seniors on a regular basis with some of these things, there are so many people who either slip through the cracks or miss any kind of information that we send out. I think our outreach needs to be really robust regarding this, to make sure that we don't miss the people who actually really need it. I mean, there's a lot of people over 70 who would go, oh, whoop-de-doo, this is great, but there's a lot of people over 70 who really don't have one extra dollar in their pocket. So I would be with my colleagues here, you know, really, let's try and find out who they are so they don't miss out on this, as opposed to me, when I'm 70, I can probably afford a cab ride. And why should I take that cab ride over someone who really can't afford an extra 20 cents a day?
Okay, so maybe we, before we get into discussion, we can open it up for public comment?
There are none, Madam Mayor.
Okay. I think you can probably sit if you want to. Okay. So we'll now open it up for council discussion. Who wants to start?
I, I, I think it's a good program. As we go forward, if we have the waitlists get too long, I think we could look at making it income restricted or need-specific, but I think that is not what's on our plate before us tonight, and I would make a motion to approve this, and we'll see how the need grows.
You could also make it restricted on, I don't, I mean, I don't know how Heather feels, but possibly on number, overall number of rides per month, so that more people have the opportunity, but I guess we can approach that when the time comes, cross that person we get there.
It's probably very, that would probably be something that the people providing the service would, because they're accepting Measure K funds and other funds from the city and the county, they probably have other parameters and they need to go by what their program is rather than start tailoring it for our specific needs.
Yeah.
So, you know, I'd be hesitant to put that in at this point, and I think that, you know, we should go ahead with the program. It seems to be, you know, something that's beneficial, and then see if we need to try to tweak where our applications come from if we need to, because the need is too great.
It sounds like based on the earlier questions, it seems like there may be consensus, so I will consider a motion, or if there's anyone else who'd like to make a comment at this time, feel free.
Yeah, I thought what you said, Terry, was spot on, so I'm in agreement.
I think Terry made the motion. I'd be happy to second it.
I did make the motion.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Second by Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes.
All right, roll call vote. Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
And Mayor Davis.
Aye. Everyone's favorite portion of the evening, and it is the Budget Workshop.
Your favorite portion of the year?
Oh, yeah, the year, excuse me.
So, thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. First of all, I appreciate your willing to spend a night on this and your attention to the detail of what we'll be presenting tonight. So, and I also, I think first, want to thank city staff, particularly Carolina and her department, a lot of work to, to put this together, and of course, a lot of work throughout the year to oversee it. Also want to thank the department heads and the various staff members who participated in the development of the budget over these past few months. So I'm going to start with just a very quick overview. We got a lot to get to tonight, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time. A few weeks ago, we had our financial advisor here to talk to you about the bond issue that we're going forward with, and in his conversation with us, and he's somebody, obviously, that deals with the financial markets and is kind of the, our outside eyes and ears in terms of how we're perceived, and his message to us was that our first and second and third message was reserves, 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 that we have a really, really strong story to tell in terms of our reserves. What I put up on the screen is where we've been in, over the last five years, and again, reserves are the culmination of how much more money you bring in versus how much money you spend over time. So that, that's basically how you develop reserves. We've gone from 11.1 million in 2019, 2019, 2020, 2021, and 2022 are all audited final numbers. We're projecting 15.87 million for this year. That was in your, as part of your mid-year update, and then we have it coming back down to 14 million in the 2024 budget, and again, that's, that's the budget. There's always kind of a distinction between what you budget and what you end up with in terms of actuals. Actuals, as I always look at, it's the end of the game, it's the final score of the game, and it kind of really tells you what, you know, what happened during that year. So that's a very good, strong story, and one that I think we should always keep in mind, because I think it makes a lot of our decision-making more rational and easy, easier as we go through. It also makes borrowing money cheaper, it provides a go-to when we have emergencies, and as you know, we have categories for these reserves. Carolina will go through that with you later on. So in terms of developing this year's budget, next slide, please. We've taken a pretty conservative approach. There are new, new positions being recommended. The only exemption to that is to permit tech in the Planning and Building Department, which was part of the technology plan, so I wanted to continue on implementation of that technology plan, because that's over a five-year period of time, and it's really, a lot of it is really to kind of, to get us up to speed on our IT services or RT uses within the organization. Second goal was to maintain our overall debt service at about 1.2 million annually. We talked about that a couple of weeks ago. It's approximately 5% of general fund revenues. That's not, there's nothing particularly magic about that number, but I think it is a kind of a good, sound number to try to maintain our debt at as we move into the future. We do have new revenue sources, as you're aware, that were sent to the voters and approved by the voters last fall. However, it's a little early to really be sure that we're going to generate the revenues that we believe we're going to generate, or at least that we brought to the voters, which was about 2 million for the sales and use tax and about 250,000 for the hotel business license tax. It's just the data's just too, too new at this point. We have, we're actually still in the first quarter for the sales tax, we're in the first half a year for the hotel tax. So a year from now, I think you'll have a much better sense of what those revenues are going to generate and a lot more confidence in terms of those projections. And then finally, the hotel industry continues to lag, and that looks like that's going to be something that's going to go in for several years into the future. The mayor and I and Mitch Bull had a conversation a few weeks ago with the hotel and visitors' convention authority of San Mateo County, and there is, as you all know, San Francisco is suffering significantly for conventions. They have other issues, but the, the issues in terms of conventions is just, they're being very slow to come back to San Francisco, and a lot of our trickle-down hotel use is, comes from, from that. So that doesn't seem like it's on the rebound anytime soon, so we continue, or we're projecting a fairly sluggish recovery in that area, and those will be in the numbers that you see from the finance director. Also a reminder that this is the second year of a two-year budget. Next year, you'll actually get to doing two years at a time. The reason we ended up doing one year at a time last year and then finishing up this year was both the transition to our new accounting system and still some lingering effects of COVID in terms of just getting, getting work done. So this is still a two-year budget process with the idea that in the off-year, you would do a deep dive into your capital improvement program. Because we've been doing this for, you know, last year, the, the regular budget, and then again, this year, we did the capital improvement review last fall, I would suggest we do another one this fall so that we don't get too far behind on that, and then at some point, you do kick that into the off-year. Next. Oh, there, thank you. And then finally, we've been working on a 10-year budget projection. I think in the past, you've seen five years. This is a planning tool. I think it kind of gives you kind of a guide in terms of where you want to go in the future, or just how confident you feel going into the future, or what issues you might face. We plan on having the first edition of that before you for review, kind of a draft edition this fall, so just be aware that that's going to be coming to you. And I think that's my comments.
Thank you.
Okay. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the finance director unless you had any questions, and the departments will be coming up one at a time with regards to their budget, and then we can have a conversation at the, the end of the evening.
Thank you, Clay. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers, and I would definitely want to reiterate a big thank you to staff, the department heads, their assistants, and we also have a, a new senior management analyst that's in the city manager's office who also helped Rose. Thank you. So let's get started on the budget overview. So, Clay, can I start it? I'm going to give more of a procedural component to the, the budget, just for the benefit of any viewers. Oops, sorry. The purpose of the budget is to take the resources that the city has and to allocate them to meet the results required by the community and directed through the city council, adhering to our city goals, which are listed there, fiscally prudent, safe community, community building, ecological sustainability, and economic development. Next. The budget process, normally it's two years, so we're developing the programs to meet the established goals. Staff develops the proposed operating budget, looking through the needs of their division and departments. They take those ideas and meet with the city manager with their proposals of how they want to allocate resources to the programs that they're doing. City manager will review, and he takes overlooking the whole city, because obviously each, each department has their view and their needs, where the city manager has manager has to weigh across the city. Um, what he, uh, determines, or what the city manager determines, is beneficial to present to the council. So then council reviews and adopts, um, the operating budget after review. Um, so just a reminder, as Clay pointed out, this is the second of the two-year budget, um, so it's covering only one year. And he talked about the capital budget, so let's move on to the next slide. Uh, we've been going through priority-based budgeting, which is a different approach. Um, it's, it's not something new per se. It's, um, it's a, it's just another method of budgeting. And what it does, it looks at the resources of the city, uh, takes into consideration any restrictions that we have or, um, compliance requirements that you have, and it, it really takes each of the, the areas of your, of each department, the resources, the personnel, uh, what, what are the, the community, what are they asking for? And it, it takes all of that information, and in, instead of looking at it just as a line, it's looking at it and taking different components of a program, and then you can analyze those programs and determine, um, do you, do we want to do this program? Do we need to do this program? Um, is it a, a program that maybe warrants some resources to, to move resources between programs? So it's a different way to look at it. And it's, it, the, um, actual, uh, governing, um, body for, uh, the accounting of, of government accounting is actually taking a lead that this is the direction that they want to go, um, as opposed to line item budgeting. So we were already in this, uh, method. And so we're already ahead of many other cities, looking at now their programs, uh, their costs on a program level. Um, so we identify, we define the programs, and it started back in two thousand sixteen over to eighteen, when we were looking at all of the various, uh, programs over departments. In eighteen to twenty, there were forty-six programs over thirty-four divisions identified. This last budget, now that we're in the second year, um, using Resource X, which is a budgeting tool, um, that allows different perspectives in slicing and dicing the data to look at the programs and evaluate them. Uh, we, we reduced from last year evaluating, some of the programs were a little too granular, so we reduced from four hundred to three hundred programs over thirty-six divisions. And we continue to measure and evaluate, um, over the year, um, and as we move forward. So the focus again that you'll have from each department is program-based, and it takes a look at the resources, and we are showing this year dollar and percentage, um, of each program for your benefit to see how much of, uh, the, the cost in those perspectives. So moving on, as far as what's going to be, what we're requesting for approval is really the general fund, but you're going to also hear some other, uh, funds tonight. But the prior, primary responsibility of council is to review and approve the general fund. So from twenty-three, um, whoops, sorry, I have an error on my, on my slide. The right side should be twenty-two, twenty-four. Um, but revenue grew two percent is what we're, um, proposing or, or budgeting to twenty-six million six hundred ninety-six thousand. And then expenses unfortunately also going up at a more rapid rate at twelve percent of what's, what will be presented tonight at twenty-eight million five hundred ninety-nine thousand. So with that, in twenty-three, we actually, um, are projecting a surplus. We had budgeted for, uh, fund balance usage, but we're projecting a surplus. And, um, with the increase of the revenue for the budget, we're, uh, we're still expecting balanced usage, but, um, it's actually lower than we had initially anticipated. So we're seeking usage of, uh, one point nine million. The next slide shows the revenue and expenditures over the past years, and these are budgeted, budgeted revenue. The, the left side is actually, those are all actual, uh, up to twenty-three projected, twenty-four budgeted, but it's revenue versus expenditures. So we've been actually, on some of these years in the past, we were, we had budgeted using, um, fund balance, but if you notice that the solid bar is actually the revenue exceeding the expenditures for those years. So staff has found ways to save. Many times, it's, um, through staffing, uh, which is the, the biggest cost of, uh, and, and so if a position is not filled, or if there's a delay in fi- in filling a position, many times that's how you'll see some of the, the savings, or if there's been a program that's del- delayed in, um, implementation. So there's a variety of ways that we'll see. If you, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, um, during the COVID years, a lot of that had to do with, without, um, some of the programs that were budgeted, we couldn't perform them, um, obviously with the close down. So, um, you'll see even steeper variance between the revenue and the expenditures. So last year, um, or in twenty twenty-three, rather, last fiscal year, we're, you'll see we're, we are proposing, um, or we were expecting, uh, that, still that the expenses, uh, would be less than the revenue.
So Caroline, before you move on to the, you, we can't see the, the, the dates because of the.
Oh, sorry.
Thing, but this, but the last columns, right? The, those are, those are projections.
Y- yes.
Right? So the, everything else is real. Actuals, but this is, so this is what you're projecting. But many times, you know, when we've done the budget, we've had, you know, it looks like the last two columns, and then in the end, they, they flip and, and the, you know, the solid blue is taller than the, the, you know, the, the expenses.
Right.
Right? So it, there's, there's, is there a possibility that could occur, or?
It's always a possibility. I mean, it's, it's a combination of, of.
Cause I didn't think we'd get there, you know, last year, and it, and it happened.
Right, managing expenses, and then the flip side is also, uh, revenues. Sometimes your revenues are more than we expected. Twenty twenty-one is a good example with the extra sales tax money that we received, so that shot up that variance.
Madam Mayor, if I may? Um, ju- just a really quick point. The, um, the revenue for twenty twenty-one was because we're B to B rather than B to C consumers in this town. Can we explain that to the general public, just so people understand why that wasn't so horrible for us?
Right.
Because B to B was very strong for us.
So several things happened during COVID. As other cities closed down their brick and mortar, every, there was a lot of online sales, and we had, um, we had, and the construction business, which is one of our bigger sales, um, sales tax components, or contributors, rather. Um, those were very strong during the COVID years. And so we als- we had a, um, online retail business that did very well. And then also, as the other cities in the county reduced their sales tax, we got a larger portion of what they call the county pool. So it was a one-time, unfortunately, it was a one-time shot, but it did contribute to that increase in revenue. So, and, and we do have a lot of, um, uh, industry here that is business to business, and, uh, and as those businesses did well during COVID, then, um, we benefited from that.
Thanks, I think it was really important to point out.
And you'll see, twenty twenty-one, that revenue year went high. Twenty twenty-two, without that component, went back down to what we would normally expect for revenue. That was a big contribution.
Okay, contin- are you done?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I?
Oh, continue.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, so next is, are just the major revenue sources that we're projecting. Property tax, sales tax includes the, the two million of the new sales tax, uh, sales and use tax component. Uh, occupancy T O T, one point nine is still well, is still below the three million that we used to, uh, see with the hotel industry. Clay also mentioned as far as the lag, that we're, we're still not seeing it the full rebound. And then we also have a, a different methodology for one of our hotels going forward. Um, so we're, it's, it's still unclear on how much we're going to see the reduction going forward. Business license tax of five point two million, um, includes the, the various business license taxes that we have, like liquid storage and, um, recycling. It's a little different. So going from the next slide are the expenses that the departments are going to be presenting. For, uh, the general fund total is twenty-eight million five ninety-nine. Each department is going to present, uh, their new requests, as well as the programs that, how, how their costs are being distributed across the programs. And also, again, we're showing the percentages and dollars. So for twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, just some considerations that we want to make sure to highlight. Last time we were here, we were on the verge of, of contracts expiring. So the employee contracts, the bargaining groups, they renewed late last year, um, and but instead of a three-year term, it was a four-year term, um, going through twenty-twenty-six. The city manager has, has since, um, announced his retirement, so there's some transition that's going to happen. And part of the employee contracts included some items that, uh, were to encourage some retention, um, for employees to help with transition. But those are always considerations that we need when you're looking financially on how, uh, that transition, transition can, um, impact your, your activity. Hotel sector unknown. Inflation is still an interesting, um, topic, uh, with all of the different rate increases during the year and how that impacts not only, um, the markets, but how that impacts costs and, uh, for the various programs. The, uh, continued construction on Sierra Point has been helping with the permitting fees, um, and then also eventually with our property taxes. Going forward, uh, unfunded liabilities for PERS, it is a, a major component for our staff, um, that we have to, we have to contribute for their future, uh, retirement. And so that is an, an area that we keep our eye on. And then finally, there has been some increase in healthcare liability insurance and workers' comp costs. Uh, last year, we had a lot of workers' comp, um, cost, unfortunately. And so what happens is the following year is when you'll see that they'll increase the, the, um, the premiums. And so we, we saw double digits in, in some of these costs, and that's then spread across to all of the staff who have to, um, absorb that. And then so, and finally, again, this is just to reiterate, the fund balance, uh, policy that we have here in the city has been a strong policy. So in prepar- uh, to prepare for something that can happen, um, a recession, we have two point five million, uh, that for, when we look at the end of the year, how this works, at the end of the year, um, the, the, anything that falls to the, the fund balance, we have to, be, before we could use it, we carve out these three, top, these three items, so that basically we're trying to say, we don't want to touch this because we're going to need to use this for future. And the first one is a recession reserve, two point five million. Um, the second one, it's, it's for unanticipated events, uh, you want to say. Um, it, it could be for, you know, if something drastic were to happen in the area, a three point five should, should carry us through a few years. And then the last one is the annual fluctuation that takes five percent of your income and five percent of your expense, combine that, and that's your third component of your reserve that we set aside. And so our recommendations tonight, after you had a chance to listen to the departments, uh, we, we feel that our revenues are strong enough, um, for, for us to continue to provide the necessary services, uh, that the community is asking for, um, and then also for the services that are required of us. We're requesting that we actively fill open positions, um, in order for us to be able to, to meet the needs of these programs. Uh, continue with the twenty-five part place improvements that we've, we've already heard in previous meetings, um, and we will be funding with public money, um, or, I'm sorry, uh, with, with bonds, um, and potentially other financing. Continue with building permitting system technology project. This is a component of the, the overwired projects, uh, technology project that we had, but this is the, the next phase of it, so we would like to continue with that. And then, uh, we want to hold off on the pension reserve funding until the end of the year, so we can determine, um, how, how much we can contribute towards the goal of five hundred thousand. And that's the budget overview. If you had any questions, or I'll move on to the first department, which happens to be finance.
I think we're going to do, I'm going to have questions after each presentation, so people don't have to keep coming back and forth to the podium, but, um, my question for you with Re- the Resource X software, and a four hundred programs down to three hundred programs? Do you, off the top of your head, have any examples of like what programs were identified that were cut?
They're not cut per se. Yeah, so, so what it is, is, um, emergency responses is, is an example. Where maybe, uh, one department is, is saying, okay, out of this emergency response, I'm going to look at it as, um, like five types of emergencies that we're going to use and call each one a program. And then this, when, when we were looking at it last year, some of the costs that were attributed to it were like less than one percent. And so what they did this year was like, let's take a step back, and maybe some of these programs, we can combine them. And, and, and where it's, it's not so much a program per se, like, it, it's not like a program of, you're thinking maybe a park and rec program. It's more of, um, like in, in accounting, we have accounts receivable and accounts payable and cashiering, so maybe we're going to combine some of these, so that, that's how we reduced.
Okay.
Yeah.
You have a question?
Yes, please. Thank you, Carolina. I just would like clarification. There's a statement in the staff report here that says the net use of the fund balance for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four is therefore anticipated to be one million nine hundred and four thousand. That is actually a loss. It means we have more expenditures than revenues, which means we are borrowing from reserves. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so it's not that we are, are, have a big, bigger pot of pool because we got more revenues this year, it's that we're now going to have expenditures anticipated to be greater than revenue.
Greater than revenue.
Okay, and second question, and so that's almost two million dollars. Have all the expenses from January storms come out of the unrestricted and available amount of eight hundred and eighty thousand?
Not all of the, the expenses for the storm have been, um, incurred yet, and then also we are seeking funding for a good chunk of those, um, expenses.
Okay, and the sales tax increase. Okay, and the sales tax increase is now going to stay the same because that's been built in. And when you did these projections, our tax base is kind of flat. It's staying the same. We don't have new business to draw new sources of tax revenue from. And when that sales tax went in, as I recall, I think it's important to note, one of the reasons was we negotiated new salaries with our staff. And part of the need for sales tax is for the entire general fund to have more money because we have built-in wage increases every year that we have to come up with money for when our revenues are down, correct?
Or?
Or flat.
Yeah.
Right, okay. And so the last question. Unfunded liability in here talking about annual funding of half a million dollars. Do we know yet, and, and I know you said we, we have to go back and, and examine the amount. Do we know how much our unfunded liability is right now? Any idea? Because you're talking about 10 years to fund half a million dollars annually. Do we have any ballpark how much we have unfunded?
Yes. It, it does fluctuate.
Yes, I understand.
Because of the market.
Yes.
And so every year is evaluated again.
Yes.
Repriced, so to speak. So we are in the millions, yes. So I can give, off the top of my head, I apologize, I don't have the number, but it is in the millions.
Okay.
That we have to cover.
Okay.
So, and it does reprice. As, as we described in the staff report, CalPERS had originally put a price of 7% that they expected for their investments. In the past few years, it had dropped down to, you know, and so here's it was negative, it returns. They are, they reduced it down to 6.8. And if it doesn't, any return that's less than that, we have to cover.
Okay, so when the market is down, the cities are expected to put more in.
To make up the difference, yes.
So if we go through several months of a bear market, great, no problem. But if we go into a recession, we have to come up with more money to keep it at a level. And, and with that, when you have employees retiring, does that not generate, we have to contribute more?
We have to cover the costs of the retirement, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Can't retire. I have to say.
I, I'm not saying.
I just want you to understand, I mean, it's.
Wait, speaking of the mic.
Retirement costs are paid over the lifetime of the employee, right? So there are, the, the unfunded liability part of it does continue whether you're active or retired.
Yes.
But just because you retire, doesn't mean that all of a sudden a bill comes to the city.
I understand.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay.
I have a question, a follow-up that you asked about the storms. How, because, you know, some of those costs haven't been incurred, like you said. And we're applying, and then maybe this is like in your, Randy, just maybe in your presentation. Do you want me to just hold off on this for you?
No, please, go ahead and ask. It's not in my presentation, the specific question, I don't think.
So then we're applying for reimbursement to some extent for these. So how, like, how have you budgeted for those circumstances, not knowing if we're going to get that money? Have you just like, have, have you budgeted as if we're not?
Well, some of it is, is absorbed, I mean, it's in current year.
Okay.
Because it incurred in.
Right, right.
23. But for the, the future, my understanding was that we were holding off on some of it until we had an understanding of the projection for, okay, there's going to be capital expenses though. It's not part of operating.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it. Is there anyone else who'd like to ask?
Well, I have a, I have a follow-up on that then. So we have storm drains full of debris and we're going to deal with capital improvements later. So now I'm, I'm starting to wonder.
So, so on your June 29th agenda.
Right.
You're going to have an item for you to approve us going forward with the storm drain cleaning, cleaning project. We're going, we, we still have a few months, you know, to be able to move forward to get it done before the, the rainy season. If for some reason we don't get the money, and we've got a couple of different, I think, three different sources, then it would probably have to come out of that reserve fund that for unexpected events. We don't anticipate that happening, but we will have that item on the 29th because that is the one project that we absolutely have to do before the rainy season.
And, and could we end up where if we apply for a grant and maybe they're processing it, but we need to do those storm drains before January where we'd have to pull it out of our emergency reserves?
It's not really a grant, it's the FEMA process.
Oh, it's FEMA, right, 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 right.
That's correct. It, 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 it's not a grant. It's, it's money. It's a cash reimbursement. But it is most likely that we will float that for some period of time. We, we will do the work and we will have to pay for it before we get reimbursed.
And it could be up to how much?
Right now, I'm the, uh, just for the storm drain cleaning alone, I'm estimating 1.7 million.
Can we make that point extremely clear to the public? There has been many requests over the last few weeks for some pretty fluffy things that I would love to say yes to. And my, my, my point to people is, looks like we never had a storm. The mountain looks beautiful. Brisbane looks gorgeous. But I want you to cast your eyes six feet down and imagine just for a moment that you're looking into our drains, whether they're a two-foot drain, a four-foot drain, or a six-foot drain. And every single one of them on the flatlands in Brisbane is 50% full of gravel, debris, and rocks at this time. Not a very pretty topic to talk about, but when people are asking for, you know, fancy new kids programs or fancy new bike things or whatever the heck it is, we need to hammer home to people that we have to front that money, whether we get it back from FEMA or not. And that, that's coming out of our money until we get that money back from FEMA if and whenever. And we can't say, no, we can't clean these drains. We know what could happen next year. But we need to make it abundantly clear to people that we're not saying no to the fancy new toys because we want to say no. We're saying no because we have something that is extremely important. So you don't end up with somebody's poop in your backyard if we don't, don't do this and get it back up.
We'll take the meeting or the item from the 29th and we'll do some public outreach on that so that people understand.
I think we really need to hammer that home.
We, we, there is a risk.
How long does that process from FEMA reimbursement normally take? Any idea? That's maybe a trick question.
No, it's, no, it's not. For a dollar amount in that range, a planning horizon, I would go for one to two years.
Okay, so out of that, likely out of this, into the next time we look at a budget, we'll be seeing that reimbursement.
It, it's certainly possible. I, I would think that by the next time you're looking at a budget, you're going to have a much better understanding as to whether or not that amount is going to be funded. And as the city manager mentioned, we are going after three sources on it. We've applied to two different federal grant, not grant programs, but just reimbursement programs or emergency reimbursement funds. And we've also filed a claim with the county of San Mateo and, and just notified them that this was your dirt.
Yeah. It's more, we'll have an understanding of the magnitude of the financial impact that that storm has caused on the city of Brisbane. When is all said and done after applying for all reimbursements? Okay.
Can I ask one? I have one more general question that was asked of me by a member of the public. When we get into departmental budgets, if during fiscal year 2223, they did not use all the funds in their department, are those carried over to the next year? Or is it just end of the year and you reconfigure what is budgeted to their department?
It's carried over into the fund balance. But then the subsequent year, then you, you have to go through the budget, a process of determining what you want to, what resources you want to use for that coming period. So it becomes available, so like in a sense where the 1.9 million that we're looking at now, it's basically using something that was an overage from a previous period.
So it went back in the pot?
Correct.
In the general fund?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you have questions?
I do, thank you. Thank you, Carolina. On page 42, so I guess it's page two of five of the staff report. So you have this, the, the breakdown of the different taxes and, you know, income.
Wait, clarification where, can you?
And so it's the packet page 42, but page two of the staff report. Yeah, okay.
42, okay.
42, 42, yes. So, you know, and, and in talking about the general fund reserves, you mentioned that the sales tax is expected to continue to increase. So just kind of looking at the projected 7,942,000, that's, that's greater than, than when we had COVID, isn't it?
That includes the 2 million of the new tax.
Okay.
So less, so it'd be the, the 5.9 is really the, the sales tax from the previously accustomed to.
Okay, so that, that, that projection then is put into that figure there, okay.
Yes.
And then, you know, it was mentioned, you know, that the T O T, you know, is still struggling, right? But it, it is significantly higher than it was during COVID.
Yes.
So, yeah.
We've grown, um, we've seen it increase more rapidly than expected, but it's still well below pre-COVID.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you know, just looking at the actuals from 2021, or 2020 and 21, and then 22, 23, yeah, it's about a million dollars more. But you're, you're estimating that it, it'll probably be kind of a plateau for the next several years.
Correct.
Okay, but not a decrease, but more of a plateau.
Yeah.
Okay.
We, we still expect some growth there.
But it was 3 million beforehand.
Four.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Yeah, yeah.
So it's still short.
No, for sure. Yes. But, you know, we, we did pass the sales tax and that, that's an increase of revenue that, that wasn't there prior to the pandemic.
Correct.
Let's see, page 44. So I, I hope you can walk us through this, Carolina, in regards to the recession reserve. So in, in 2021, there was the 2.5 million. And then in 2022, we used those funds when we were working on the budget. And then we took the money out, almost, almost the full amount, right? And then, but by the following year, the 2.5 million was, 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 we were able to replenish that.
Correct.
So now we're looking at their projections for 2024 and, and we're going to use it again. So, you know, kind of walk us through like how we were able to replenish it and, and what's the, you know, potential likelihood of replenishing that based upon the data that we have today?
So it, it is again, if, if your, as your revenues are exceeding your expenses, then it all becomes available again. Net of some restrictions that you have outside of these three because there are other restrictions on reserves. But that's, and, and if you make a, a point that the first portion of those revenues that are in excess are going to come back to these pools.
Okay, so, so when we, when we pulled that money out of 2022, we, you know, as council, staff, you know, the goal was to replenish and replenish as, as quickly as possible. So when it takes this money out, using your crystal ball, I know that's not really fair to you, but, you know, based upon how things were going, when do you anticipate that that fund would be fully funded?
Again, I mean, it could be within the following year, depending on how strong those revenues come back the following. And, and in essence, some of the expenses that we have right now are one time, right? So managing those expenses can help contribute to replenishing first.
Okay, so, I mean, because what I'm getting at is that the reason why you're, you're saying that, hey, we could pull this out is that you're confident that we can replenish it. Okay.
Yeah.
And then on the following page, page 45, you know, talking about the pension trust fund reserves. So you're recommending resuming the annual funding of half a million dollars. And the goal is to get it up to $5 million, which then would cover two years worth of unfunded liability payment. And, you know, I mean, I, I'm all in favor of, you know, having those, those reserves to be able to deal with unforeseen circumstances. But it does seem like a lot to me, and so I was curious to know, you know, are other cities in San Mateo County, you know, doing something like this with the pension trust fund reserve that has this significant amount of money in it?
If they have trusts?
Yeah, I mean, are other cities, you know, do they, do they also have these pension trust fund reserves? And, and, you know, funding at a level where it would cover two years of unfunded liability payments?
It's, it's actually been encouraged as of late, you'll hear, you're hearing and seeing a lot more discussions and workshops and stuff to, to have trusts in place because of the fact that it's, once you put it in that trust, it's not touchable for anything else. And one of the things that was always a concern with, with pension money is that, you know, if, if, if it is not put somewhere protected, that it could be used for, for, for other operations or other expenses that a city can go through. So by preserving it and show a trust, then at least you have that for, for the employees going forward and then employees that have retired that, that it's there. We haven't had to use it yet. We are building it so in the case where if the recession got really bad, that we can go and pay our, our annual amounts through those trusts because that's what it would, could be used for.
Instead of using the general fund?
Correct.
Okay, so when, when you, when you position it like that, then that makes sense. And then, you know, so resuming the $500,000 payment, in, in a sense, you know, part of the, I guess you could say, I mean, correct me if I'm, I'm not, you know, looking at it properly. But some of the reserves, the, the recession reserve, some of this being taken out and say, for example, 500,000 is going into this pension reserve.
The trust.
Trust, right. I, I mean, if you were to kind of say, yeah, that's what we're going to do, but there's so many other things.
So right, right now, it's like, it, it is definitely a plan that we want to do, but we're not actually putting in the 500,000 yet into this, the current budget. Because it's, we're already recognizing that we're going to be exceeding our revenue. And so we want to see if, if we have savings, then yes, let's move forward with, with continuing to fund it.
Okay, so this is. Okay, so this is some that you're recommending now. It's only if when?
We definitely want to stay on track to keep to keep funding it.
Okay.
But it isn't part of it yet, of this budget yet.
And then, you know, I ask, I mean, you just, you know, just just give a brief description about the indirect costs? You know, because they're they're found throughout the budget and and so like, what does that mean?
So the indirect costs are actually a cost that it's from the general fund departments that offer services to the rest of the city and calculate what those costs. For an example, payroll, it's a cost to all the various departments. And so we attribute a fee, so to speak, a rate by headcount that we allocate across. But you don't charge the general fund because it's general fund to general fund, but we do charge the other funds as as part of their expenses is is an indirect cost. And it's basically looking at it, a a cost that they would have to incur if if they were to have their own administrative or their own payroll services. It's it's a cost they would have to incur. So we're providing that service from the general fund to them. And it's also like the usage of the facilities, so utilities, all of those costs are then put into a rate. And then it's charged to the other funds. And they, so they're paying for it and then we're seeing it in the revenue. So it's like a transfer, really, between funds.
Internal billing?
Correct.
Okay.
Internal services.
All right, great. You know, I mean, I I'm not sure if we're going to go over this with the different departments. And and I know that we're going to talk about to the other funds. But, you know, on page forty-seven, you know, I'm just looking at like parking wreck costs and then also the marina, you know, costs in in you know, about raising fees, you know, like we're we're, you know, apparently our fees are pretty low in these two areas. You know, is if we did raise fees that were more in line with, say, other cities and, you know, other marinas in the county, how does that impact, you know, your 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 budget?
Well, that, again, will be, it's more the general fund that we're presenting tonight because utilities and marina funds have to be self-sustaining. They will be presenting their expenses so you can see their operations, but their revenue is really supposed to be covering that.
Got it.
So it's not taken from the general fund unless there's a a request like a LIRA is 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 one where the general fund offers to to pay.
Okay. And then just one last thing. So, you know, we receive, you know, money from B D I for the reimbursement, you know, staff time and other types of resources to deal with their project because it's so big. You know, and then it was talked about, like, you know, grants, you know, granted the FEMA's reimbursement, but there are other types of grants out there. How how does that all get worked into when you're trying to put together this budget?
For for grant revenue, unless there's something known, we don't typically budget for a grant. If we do, it's it's pretty minimal. But again, unless we know we're applying and or by now we know that it's it's coming type of thing. And then as far as like the B D Is and those types of development agreements, a lot of those are reimbursements paid through a different fund. So the only thing that you're going to see through the general fund operations is the admin fee that we collect from them. So anything that we put up, like payout for them and getting reimbursed, that's not flowing through the general fund. That's through a different fund.
Oh, okay. But indirect costs, right? I mean, we are applying.
The indirect costs that we charge are to other city funds. So like utilities, marina, and there's there's two other special districts that that are city. Those are the ones who who get charged the indirect, not other development funds.
Okay, so the reimbursement then from B D I for, you know, for the time and effort and other resources that we put into their project, we bill them for it, we receive the money, but that goes into a different?
If if it's the administrative fee, that falls in the general fund.
Okay.
If it's if it's, we're paying a like professional service on their behalf, we might be fronting the money, but then and we front that through a different fund and then that reimburses it so that it's never flowing through the general fund.
Okay, no, that makes sense. All right, thank you.
But I, let me take a step back. It's not necessarily fronting the money because a lot of times they will give a deposit that's part of the agreement. They give a deposit that is supposed to cover those expenses and then that's, we're replenishing those deposits.
Anyone, any other questions for Carolina? Okay. So we will move on then to our first department pres- ooh, department presentation.
Okay.
Finance, are you still?
It's supposed to be me.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So finance, and I still have it on the so she's putting that, our mission. Finance delivers reliable financial information technology services. We're responsible for facilitating the planning, organization, implementation, control, coordination, and direction of the financial and technolog- technolog- technology policies and programs of the city as established by city council and the city manager. So we are requesting a budget of one million six hundred seventy-six thousand nine sixty-eight. And that is covering programs that are fulfilled with seven full-time employees. Areas that we cover are accounting, financial management, budget, audit, cash sharing, billing, payables, payroll, treasury management, business licenses, information services, and risk management. So those are the various the the bigger areas that we cover. There are some other smaller programs not listed. So out of that budget, it's basically, you're you're seeing the different, the higher programs that we have. There's a lot of administrative costs because we serve the general city. This computer system that we have here is more of the accounting computer system, not the central services. But we but we also have the I T staff that's in the finance budget. So these are, you can see the various programs we have. Payroll processing, cash sharing, accounts, payroll, accounting, and a lot of other programs. We're still fine tuning some of this as far as allocating the time as we're transitioning staff. So you can take questions for, at the end, if if you have questions on the programs. But moving to the new items, what we're requesting this year, there is an increase over last year's budget by sixty thousand. And a few of these are, we would like to transition our business license program and we received some quotes. In order to do that transition, there's going to be an implementation component that is a bigger ticket for a one a one-year cost. The budget that we are using with Resource X, we also have to compile a budget book. And so we have sought out a a company that can help us build not only a a physical book, but it's more of an online tool that you're seeing different cities have so that the citizens and the and council, so so please, but citizens and and other interested parties can review our budget and and be a little bit more interactive. And it is very difficult to to manage a lot of these different departments. And with some of the software, it will just facilitate the the process so that if you make one change, it flows throughout the whole system as opposed to a lot of manual process. So and then also there are different areas within the accounting now that require certain things that they would like to see in their budgets. The the cities provide information in their budgets. So this software will help us with that compliance to make sure that we're covering all of the areas that we need to. Next area is a contract management, a compliance software. Again, Gatsby, which governs accounting standards for governmental entities, that the requirements has been aggressively expanding over the last ten years. And and so this software that we're seeking is just a way for us to stay in compliance and review our various contracts to make sure that we can analyze to make sure what falls under these new Gaspys. And then finally, every other year, we have to pay for retirement plan valuations. So there is a cost to that. We we try not to have to do it. We we don't have to do it every year, so we take advantage of not doing it every year. But this coming year, we're due for the valuation. So these are the items that we're looking for.
Okay. Council member, Hunter?
So I'm sorry, we, in in our packets, we didn't get what your current budget was and what your proposed budget is. And that makes it really difficult to look at differences. So did you say you had a sixty thousand increase over last year? Because that doesn't show on our paperwork.
Correct.
Departmental.
Correct, of 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 the ass, yes.
So it's a sixty, you you said it was sixty thousand?
From last year, yes.
And?
You have the current year of so for finance, a current year is one million six hundred sixteen, uh, six seven six, sorry.
What page is that on?
Fifty-two.
I'm on page fifty-two and I have?
I don't have that. No. You'd you'd have to look on page forty-seven.
Oh.
Well, you didn't, we're we're not putting them side by side, so that's the difficult portion. And with, we don't have?
You don't have last year's, correct. You don't have?
We don't have a breakdown.
We can't see deltas.
So there's no way to see where any differences are. And that's a problem when we're trying to study a budget, that we don't see what you're changing in your budget.
So what this, what we wanted to do was highlight the the requests that everyone is making. And we were definitely going to provide a a comparison. And we can definitely provide it in the next meeting. But it was more of each department providing what their requests are for this workshop. But I I hear you.
Because it's it's really hard to look at what any differences are when you don't have anything to compare it to. Unless I was to go back to, you know, a year ago and try to dig up data and look at it in a different way.
Correct.
So and on the, on your particular request, the thirty thousand in travel and training, what is that encompassing?
So we have a training that we have to do for certification. And then there's also training for our technology, for our system. There's there's training on different, the the ones we normally go to are accounting type training, payroll type training, tax type training. So there's different components to that. And that's that's part of it.
And these are programs that you have to go off-site to to do the training?
Correct. So there's there's travel involved, sometimes it's interstate, so or down in different parts of California. So there's lodging and airfare, a week-long trainings types of those types.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else for Carolina? Okay.
So the next we have is H R.
Resources?
And Clay will be doing H R.
Student have last years either.
So I I think we'll try to, we'll provide you at least the gross number from last year to this year as each department comes up, you'll at least have that. And then we can provide the actuals from, or the budgeted from last year at the next meeting.
Okay.
So the human resources department, sake of time, I'm not going to go read the mission statement. I think we can, if there's any questions about that, you can certainly ask that. And we'll just jump to the to the more the fiscal part of it. So the overall budget is eight hundred and fifty-one thousand, again, no new positions. They have three full-time and one part-time person in our human resources division. I think that's consistent with at least the last five or six years.
What page are we on?
So the
I don't see one for human resources.
Oh, yeah, it got sent later.
I apologize for that.
Can I get a copy, please? What page is it on then? Because I don't have it.
I don't have eighty-four.
No, eighty-four is the total number of pages. They're they're looking for the specific page it's on.
Yeah, I only have eighty-two pages.
I don't have a human resources budget page.
They got emailed to us.
Hold on, shoot, we're going to get you the, we'll get it for you. To move this along, let's go to the next department.
That's what I was just going to say.
We'll come back to this.
Circle back. Okay, well, you're up for city manager. Do you want to skip that one too? Okay. Okay, let us get to the page.
City manager we're doing first?
Okay, we can do city manager first.
Yes.
Okay. So
Page forty-nine.
Is everybody there? Wait.
Thanks, Angel.
There you go, thanks. This is for?
Thank you.
City manager's budget. Okay, so the overall budget for the city manager's department is one point five million. The areas covered include city administration, communications, economic development, and risk management. So as for our program breakdown, which is on the next slide, administration is at the top at twenty-eight percent, followed by city council and commission support. Next are programs that our administrative management analyst and senior management analyst, I as your communications manager, and our digital media coordinator are assigned to. You can see the various publications, programs that our office is responsible for. For this next fiscal year, the new items include half of the cost for E P I C professional services. E P I C is our internal staff committee, stands for Equity Plus Inclusion Committee. And the professional services cost is for staff D I training. And there's also our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Training. And then there's Innovation Committee and Programs, projects that got moved to the City Managers Budget. It was in a very, it was in a different part of the budget last year, I think in, might have been Public Works. So it got moved into the appropriate place this year. There's increased travel and training, slightly, 1,000, I believe, for specifically the new City Manager position. And the last item is what we heard under New Business Item K today, the Got Wheels Contribution, which is pending. And that concludes the City Managers Budget. If you have any questions.
What is the, what's the difference between last year's budget and this year's budget?
For City Manager?
Yes.
It's an increase of 355,194.
Could you repeat that?
Do you have percentage?
30%.
Can we get a breakdown when it comes back to some what those items are?
Yes, yeah. So the part of that position, a part of that increase is the Assistant City Manager was apportioned to four different cost centers or departments. And now it is sitting solely under the City Managers Department. So that's the majority of that cost increase.
It would be really helpful if what we're seeing on the screen of programs, if we had that, because all we're looking at are just line items under the fund. And it really kind of helps to see how those funds are distributed to different programs because we don't see any of that detail. I'd like to see that for every fund, actually.
Also, I think some pie charts for overall city spending attributed to each department. I think we used to do that. We could see, you know, obviously like Police and Fire, right? It's like a big, or Public Works is like a bit, really big.
It is definitely part of what we will be giving you. And then it's for the 29th. Again, part of the, as we were rolling out of COVID, it was a little lighter of a package. But we understand that you want to now see the comparisons again for the first part of the meeting. So we apologize for that.
Also, also the dramatic difference that COVID made in 2020, which just dropped off. I think it would be beneficial to see what we're budgeting now versus 2019, where we left off and what we call normal. To see, are we doing the same now? Or have things changed completely where something dramatic has changed with programs? Just to see how that, that big difference, because that was a time marker.
Madam Mayor, if I may also. I, I think it would be really helpful to the public as well because I've, I've, I've heard a lot of information from various people that they want this and they want that, and they want all of these things as though COVID never happened. I think we really need to push at home that this was the trajectory that we were on. This is where we were at. This is what our income looked like. This is what our expenses look like. This is where our happy place back in 2019. And then, you know, 2020, we crashed to the ground. Our county crashed to the ground. We had to come up with all of these different things that pulled money out of budgets. The library, JPA, were feeding people. I mean, everybody spun on a dime. What was the favorite term that we used?
Pivot.
Pivoted, everybody pivoted and did these different things and pulled money out of budgets that money wasn't supposed to come out of. And now, because everything looks bright and shiny again, everybody thinks that we can just snap back to where we were. I think we need a reality check. And those comparative numbers are going to help people understand that we can't just snap back to where we were. This is going to be a road to recovery. Some of it's steep, some of it may be quicker than others. But I think these comparative numbers and these comparative graphs and things are going to help people understand that when they say to me, can I have this? And I have to say no, it's not because I want to say no. It's because we got $1.7 million just to rotaroot our drains. And, you know, we need to be able to put those kind of realities out per se. Thank you.
Okay.
So I have another question on this, on the special department expense for 36,000. What is that?
Can I step in? I'm sorry, because we had tasked each department to provide it at the program level. And then we're asked for line item information for your packets later. So do we want to change anything to maybe come back so that you have that information?
Do we not know what that $36,000 is?
No, we do, but it's just, I just want to be fair to the staff who have prepared at a program level. And you're looking at something that's a line item.
I'm not sure how to look at a budget without diving deep into things. And this doesn't give the information that I need to make a decision on increases or decreases. I'm, I'm still a little, I'm not understanding the 355,000 increase where the deputy city manager is now attributed to this instead of working on different programs.
He was allocated across different departments.
Right, but I didn't think we had a deputy city manager right now.
But we're still budgeting for, yeah.
You're right, we don't. I don't know what my successor may or may not want to do in terms of staffing. I think it's only fair to leave the position in there. But I left it in there only for a half year, which is the back end of the year. I'm not going to fill it, but a new person may see the need to do that. What they assign that person to, you know, is going to be determined by what, how they see the needs. They may, instead of having an Assistant City Manager, want to have some other level of management position. So we're just recommending that we leave the position in the budget, leave the funding in the budget for the second half of the year. And then that's a decision for the success, my successor.
Okay, and?
Clay, I have a question for you. What's the, what's the final date for the, where the council has to approve the budget?
Next year.
You know, pass that.
June 30.
It is always good to approve a budget before the beginning of the fiscal year.
Okay.
So that would be June 30.
June 30, okay. And just the sense that I'm getting, this is from the council, is that maybe the information that we have here is, is hard to.
So why don't we just go through, that's fine. I think I know where you're going. If the rest of you want to do that, we can delay tonight and bring it and get the information you want and come back. But let's be, let's spend some time now making sure that we understand what that information is.
Yeah, and that's why I'm asking about the time.
I mean, I'm perfectly willing to do that.
Another meeting, you know, and we got one meeting coming up and, or whatever you feel is, you know.
Well, what I would suggest, I've got, I'm going to be out of town next Thursday. So maybe the following Tuesday. And then we could have Tuesday and then Thursday are, we have scheduled. I don't know if that works for you guys. Maybe we could do Wednesday, you know. Or maybe we can come in early on Thursday and start at 6 o'clock or something.
One, one, it would be a long night. Yeah, whatever, you know.
I'd be okay with a long night. I'm not here next Thursday either. Are we going to get this information in advance?
Yes, yes, yes. That would be the idea.
I think in fairness, we need a good seven days because I don't have all, every day to look at it.
Caroline, I think we can probably do that.
It's going to take time for staff to prepare.
Exactly.
Then they're going to need to get it to us. Then we're going to need to study it. So I think the 29th is the day.
Okay, so in terms of information, we'll, we'll aim for next Thursday to get the information to you. The following Thursday would be when the meeting's at.
That's fine.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Is this an evening meeting? Because I have a meeting that day. And I'm going to be in the south part of the county. Are we talking 7:30?
Yes, well, we had originally scheduled it for 7:30.
Because if it's earlier, I'm not sure I'm going to be able to get here.
Are you talking about PC? You might have to miss. You might just have to miss.
This is a, well, this is a pretty important meeting.
Yeah, but this is our budget, so.
I understand. I'm just saying, if we have any latitude in the day.
You could do Wednesday night.
Are we interviewing firms?
No, you'll, you'll choose, we had a workshop set up for the 29th. You know, 15, 20 minutes for you to choose the firms you want to interview, but not the interviews themselves.
Oh, okay.
So what time are you thinking on the 29th? Just so I can try to check.
Well, I mean, I, based on our conversation right here, I was thinking maybe as early as 6:00. But, you know, I understand you have a conflict, so.
Okay, no, no, 6:00 may do it. Let's just try to do that and see if I can.
Excuse me, through the mayor, boss just, my apologies, just reminded it. Public Works has at least three public hearings on the 29th agenda.
Yeah, that's why I'm talking about, sorry, 6:00.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we do have some agenda items that we need to do that evening also.
So maybe we can do those first. And if you need to come in, you know, we can take, we can put all the other, maybe we can take care of all the other business to give you like some leeway in coming in a little bit later. You can come in at budget time. You could come late. Okay.
In terms of information, you want actuals from last year's budget? And then maybe actuals from the year before? I know, I believe you said.
I heard 2019 is what I heard.
So actuals from 20, which would be the 2018, 2019 year, that's the last full year before COVID.
Yep.
And then budgeted from last year? And then budget request from this year? So that'd be three years.
Because we don't know actuals. It's not been audited, that's what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, so budgeted then?
Yeah, or projected. We have projected for this year.
We have budget request for next year. And then we have actuals.
It's just, in the past, we've had a lot more information on the departmentals.
Okay, I'm fine with that. I mean, we've been trying to move to a little bit different format.
Making it easier on us.
And, you know, I think we've also had a couple of years where we did this over Zoom. And I think maybe that was a, there was a different information needed.
Well, and during those times, we were in radically different scenarios where we didn't have much choice on a lot of stuff.
Okay, so I got those three budget years.
And do we need percentage change? Do you want, or just numbers?
I just want to see side by side what's changing, what is in there that, that's new? And, you know, what our projected was and what they're asking for now? So that we can really see what the differences are.
Okay, and we'll, we'll try to as best we can to tell the story of those changes so that there's a narrative to go along with that.
Because, you know, having, having the department head just discuss what the changes are without any numbers is really difficult for me to wrap my financial head around.
Okay, fair enough.
So you want new items to be highlighted, like color or something?
Well, what they are and how much they are, not just, oh, well, we want to do X, Y, and Z, and there's no number attached to it.
Okay, and then also pie charts?
You know, if there's something really dramatically different to Madam Mayor, I think it would be really beneficial for us, but also very, to explain to the public who are going to come back to us and say, what happened here? I mean, we know some of what happened here, but, you know, there were things that were dramatically different and people took on jobs over the last few years that changed their job description dramatically and therefore probably their budget as a result.
There will be, you know, just to be, you know, alert. I mean, there's going to be significant changes between 19 and 23 because we've made some organizational structural changes and stuff. So we're going to have to tell a story along with just providing you the numbers.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll do our best to try to do that for you.
For me, and I know that this request came from another council member, what happened in 2019 or before COVID isn't as important to me as to what differences we're doing this year from last year.
Okay, fair enough.
Just because 2019, you know, we may never go back to what we were pre-pandemic.
Yeah.
And we may never have those opportunities again or those, those things happening. So I think if we see, for me, and again, I don't know about others, you know, for me, seeing what we're doing now and what we're proposing to do with money is a bigger thing for me personally.
I am in the, yeah. I mean, it was just because Karen, for the public, but I mean.
Well, that doesn't have to be in great depth. But we are going to be responsible to answering questions to the public. Why was this this and it's now that? And if we've got an easy answer, you know, we're doing things differently or we had to spend money because of X, Y, or Z.
Right, or we had a program that we did before COVID and now it's no longer relevant or we replaced it, something, or this has to cost, now we're adding new technology to this department. So those are significant changes.
I don't think the public is really ingratiated in the budget deeper than us. I mean, I don't think the general public is going to say, well, in 2019, you guys spent this amount of money in Park and Rec and this year you're spending this.
There are, there are certain people who are. There are certain people who are. They're already, already saying.
So do we want 2019 then or not?
I don't need it. I don't need it, but, I mean, feel free if the rest of you feel like that's significant.
I mean, it's actuals, so we can do it. I just, just warning you that they're probably not going to line up, you know, as well. The 22 and 23 will probably line up fairly well. 2019 is probably going to be a little, little off because, you know, it's five years we've done, we're doing things different.
You're veer off into conversations about things that were so far, like it's, I think it's irrelevant to now, to what's happening right now personally. To talk about 2019, it's like a different, totally different time by comparison. We've lived lifetimes since 2019.
Seems like it.
Feels like it.
You know, if, if staff brought back something that was familiar to previous budgets, how we received the information, would that, would that be good feedback for, for staff? I mean, it seems like, like we're used to, you know, getting the budget analysis a certain way. And this is different and the difference is not what, what I guess, you know, is, you know, helping us. So if they're able to provide something that was similar.
We used to have a big binder, basically, and it would show last year, this year.
Okay, so something, if you could go back in time, Clay, in that format, if it's possible.
We can get you a big binder if you want.
Yeah, just drown us.
Just kidding. Yeah, so we'll, I mean, I don't think it's going to be that hard to get the 19 information, only because it's the actuals.
It's really, it's not even, it's, it's for me mostly if there's been a big change in a program. Not, not the entire department, but if there was a big change in a program from 2019 to now, that would be interesting to know why. Either more money, less money, what's going on, what happened? And I assure you, if we don't, we're going to be asked. For brief COVID.
Because haven't we discussed all those large changes already every year since we've been looking at the budget? Like we've already.
You would have, yeah.
We've already looked at big changes in budgets like we're doing right now.
Well, how about we do this? Caroline and I will work on this. We'll see, maybe, maybe there's a story to tell between 19 and here in terms of what we're doing different. maybe, maybe there's a story to tell between 19 and, and here, in terms of what we're doing different. Um, and where our expenditures have risen, and, you know, we'll, we'll try to lay that out for you and give you the, give you the, the, the bulk of the reasons for it, the bulk of the answers. I mean, the trans, the, the technology plan is a perfect example. I mean, we, that was not something we started until, I think, 21. So that wasn't part of the 19 budget, and that's about a half million dollars a year that we're, we're now spending. Plus, there's been at least one additional position that I, that I can think of that we've added because of that.
Right, we hired more people.
Mm-hmm. Well, yeah, we certainly have hired more people since 2019.
Also, I mean, there's, we've been roundabout referencing it, but there's been three public comments sent to us about a pump track. So I want to know how much do we think it costs to build a pump track? Because we have requests to budget for a pump track, and I need to know, well, how much? We're, so we're working with, you know, accurate numbers. How much is a pump track even to build? Great. Four hundred and six hundred thousand. Will you put that in the packet, please?
Yeah.
And we're not going to fund our unfunded liabilities.
No, we're going to discuss it. I just, we need to have that information so we can have an accurate conversation about what things cost in the real world.
Just one additional thing to that is that, that's the kind of project you would normally talk about in your capital improvement plan, not your operating budget.
Right, but since there's been three
Understood.
public comments, I know it's going to come up. I know, when we deliver it.
It's being discussed on Facebook right now.
That's coming up. So, you know, we owe it to the public to talk about it.
They asked us to add it to the budget.
Okay, so are we still going through every department's thing?
I think there's, um, let's not do that tonight unless, you know, we want to. And we'll, we'll bring back the information as you've requested, and we'll start the meeting for six o'clock on, uh, Thursday, the 29th. We do have some business items that we'll need to do, so we'll do those upfront, and then we'll get, jump into the budget.
I also think maybe, um, you know, there are obviously some questions we ask specifically for the public to hear the answers to, like I just did.
Sure.
There are some questions that's really can be asked between staff preliminarily, or in advance of, in advance of a meeting, and I would just encourage everyone, once you receive your packet and you go through it, there's really just like some quick questions that you have for staff. In order to keep our next meeting moving along as best as possible, maybe some of those questions you can ask to staff prior. You know, just like your question about the 36,000, like that type of, that's an example of a question.
But again, at this point, I didn't know.
No, 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 I'm not saying that question at this time is bad.
Saying at this point, I didn't know what those questions were going to be because I didn't see that data.
Right, right, right.
Um, and for me, and one of the things I'd like to get out to staff, and maybe to the rest of the council, I'm very concerned about using close to 2 million in reserves and going into our recession clause when we are not in a recession. And so I'd also like to see staff come back with suggestions on what we may not do, what we may not, what programs may not be in existence if we are trying not to go into those reserves, and also not using the perhaps 1.7 million that is, you know, coming from FEMA, maybe, to clean our storm drains. So.
That, that's a huge, a huge proposition to do, to do that kind of analysis. I, there, there's, I, I mean, there's no way I can cut this budget by 1.9 million without significant number of layoffs. And I don't think we want to go in that direction.
Okay, well, I mean.
There, there are things that we're going to be presenting to you that are additions to the budget. They're much more on the margin, and so we could have a discussion about either not doing some of those or delaying that. But it's nowhere going to come, it's not going to come anywhere near 1.9 million dollars. Just want.
I'm, I'm just telling you what my concerns are.
I, I, I share your concerns. I mean, the, the reserves, I think, are very important for us to, to maintain. I, I will, you know, I do want to note, you know, that in seven years in a row, we brought in more revenue than we spent. We projected this year that we would spend 3 million more than we were, we were going to bring in. We're actually going to have a surplus this year. It's very common for us to start the year with these kinds of projections and then end up in a better position. For one thing, you never spend all the amount of money that you, you budget.
Right.
So that is almost guaranteed you're going to get some savings there.
Yeah.
We've had a recent conversation with our sales tax auditor that was, um, pretty bullish. But we didn't put those numbers into these projections because we want to wait and see them, um, come through for a little bit longer period of time. So we go very conservative on the, on the, the expenditures. We budget for everything that we think we may be needing in the upcoming year. We budget our positions to be filled 100% throughout the year. We know that's not going to happen. So we always do have some savings there. Again, I think we can have a good conversation around those things that are kind of on the margin.
You know, Clay, I'm sorry.
I just want the public to be very aware that, you know, we, we do have limitations. There is no cash cow. And that, um, you know, we're doing everything we can to keep city services at a level that we can maintain, and that we can, you know, keep a steady product for our citizens. But there isn't a lot of fluff in this budget that they can be asking for more. And, and I think that's really important position to get out there to our citizens, that everything they ask for ends up costing money one way or another. And, and so I just want to be really clear that we are trying to be, I mean, I'm anticipating people saying, well, all the staff got big raises, and now we can't pay for things. We're going to have to take from reserves. And, and that's going to have some pushback on us and the departments. So I just want to be clear on that, that I'm hoping that I don't want to go 2 million into reserves, plus 1.7 for cleanup. I mean, that to me is one of my worst nightmares.
Clay, uh, could you provide, uh, I know in the, in the staff report that we got, it went up to 2024, but it didn't go into the future. And if we could have, you know, kind of those projections, I think that kind of helps. I mean, granted, it's not a crystal ball, but it allows us to kind of, you know, get an understanding of like, these things are, you know, they're not like in the moment, it's, it's really looking out over the horizon.
Yeah, and as you may recall, it indicated that we're, we're working on the 10-year model.
Now, 10-year, that's pretty far out there, but.
It, it gives you kind of a sense of the issues that you may face, and the things that we know that we're, you know, we may be but we're, we're not going to have that ready for some time. Um, I could talk with Caroline. I, I, I know we've been doing five-year projections.
Five-year, I think, is, is very appropriate, and, and if that could be part of what we get on the 29th, I think that would be helpful. And, you, you know, I think, um, you know, I, I agree with you, Terry. I mean, you, you know, going into the reserves, y- you know, and initially, right, that, that, that does seem you know, scary, right? But then when you, but the thing is, is that you don't look at it from an emotional point of view. You look at it from like the, from a, a, a fiscal analysis, right? You really look at the data, and, and, but you also look at what we've done in the past, right? And, and that's something that Clay is, is already brought up. You know, we've, we've, we've had these projections, and then the actuals wound up being different. And so, um, but if you're going to go into those reserves, you, you need to have some competence, right? And I think that competence needs to, to be there in that data that is presented to us on, on, on the 29th, and, and I feel confident that, that it will be, because you know, you've been on the council for what, 11 years? I've been on for 13 years, and we've gone through some really, really harsh times. And we, we still seem to come out, um, you know, fiscally sound, even through all those different, um, you know, financial ups and downs.
Stuff out that, uh, you know, surprised everyone, and, and we went through some really hard gymnastics on, on trying to do a 10 or 20% across the board, you know, what-if scenario. We were very lucky that it didn't end up having to come to fruition. But I think it was a wake-up call. And to be saying we're going into our reserve, our recession funds when no one has said we're in a recession. You know, legally, we haven't hit that designation, um, financial designation. It, it just is worrisome to me.
We have a shopping mall that's being handed back to the owner, and I will, I will mention one thing you didn't.
We have?
No, 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 no. We have in the Bay Area.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Westfield Center. And I'll mention one thing that you didn't. There are some weather prognosticators saying we may have another stormy January. And if we use that emergency reserve fund, we better think long and hard about it.
Okay, well, I don't want to get too much into discussion because, you know, we're still evaluating information at this time. We really should be asking questions. But because we're going to, I know that it's coming to have a discussion about a capital improvement project, I think it would be good for us to just get the list of all of the capital improvement projects. So the discussion is within context. So if that can be provided, we all know what it is. We've, you know, looked at this several times. Should be easy to put in there, but that discussion needs to happen within context. So for the next meeting, do we still want to go through and have every department give a presentation, or do we want to receive the budget and review it, and then ask questions that you have from analyzing? Or do you want to go department by department with each department giving a presentation to you?
I would be happy with questions. If we've got time to analyze it, I think we should have plenty of pre-meeting questions that we could ask of staff, so we're not going page by page by page through something, trying to analyze it on the fly, and then discuss things that we can't wrap our heads around on the night.
Personally, it's much easier, easier for me to digest written material
Yeah.
than it is to have someone give a presentation, slides are moving very fast. If I have a packet that I can review over a number of days and make notes in the margins.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say that as the lists of the items are already prepared, we can easily put that into the package for next time.
For me, when the departmental came up, and we only saw a couple of brief ones, and there are additional items, maybe have a, a tag next to them, or why they're important, that this is, you know, government required. A new government-required service. It's a new this. It's a new that. Um, and so we know why the big asks are there, and there's a dollar amount next to them.
Right.
So that it's, you know, when, when I got the initial, um, departmental, and it's like, okay, we're asking for these four things, and it's an extra 60,000, but what's costing what in that? So knowing that and would be a big help to me, and I can look and say, oh, police is asking for X, and that's why this has changed so much. And, and so I wouldn't have to hear the explanation from the department.
Right, and like.
That takes a lot of time to have every single department come up and give a presentation, you know.
But if we have that in advance, then we know what's coming.
But orally at a meeting is what I'm saying.
Yeah, we, we will have, we will have the items of requesting, uh, with values assigned to them, um, as part of your package prior to the meeting.
Plus, it'll take the heat off everybody relative to the public as well.
The public can access all those documents and review everything too.
And then, if we have questions, or somebody asks us questions, we can have it answered by the meeting time.
Okay.
Make it easier on you.
Is everyone okay with that format?
That works for me. That's fine.
Okay. Moving on. Wait, I, this should open it up for public comment?
There are none, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So we'll continue this, and, um, we'll move on to staff reports. City managers' report on upcoming activities?
No report tonight.
Okay, we will move on to mayor council matters. Um, and internally with city committees, our report says there were no meetings from May 27th to June 9th. So does anyone have any county meetings they'd like to report on?
I have one.
Okay.
I do too.
So, um, I attended the SFO roundtable meeting, and we were informed by the airport that they have completed their runway paving, so that is done. And they're back to using both runways. They did also say that they were back to pre-pandemic flights, and that they're heavier and more loaded. So, um, we're back to having quite a bit of noise, and it's been a discussion on Facebook about the noise, and I tried to jump in and let people know about the runway changes, and some people asked about specifics at other airports on what they're doing about runway takeoff noise and landing noise. And I tried to explain that those options aren't available to SFO anymore because of how the FAA has rebranded themselves against, um, you know, making special exemptions. And, you know, I got a little pushback from an ex-council member that was pretty snarky. Not unexpected, but pretty snarky. And, but at that last meeting, SFO, or the FAA has asked everyone, from citizens to cities, to airport roundtables, to answer a questionnaire about noise, and how they can deal with noise better, what metrics they should use for noise, what is an annoyance to people about noise. And this document is available to all of our citizens and all of our cities to, uh, respond to this. The roundtable did a really good job of, of writing out very specific requests from the FAA in response to this questionnaire. We spent a couple hours going over the responses and making corrections to make it a little more impactful, and let the FAA know how much airplane noise affects our communities. And so I am going to get together with staff over the next few days. We have till the end of July to submit any kind of response to this survey. And allegedly, all of the survey results, all of the comments are going to be analyzed by the FAA. Certainly, we don't know how in-depth or how much to heart they will take them, and if they will get us any relief. But, um, I will get together with staff, and maybe we can put something on our website that we can put a link to this FAA request for information about noise and noise effects. And I invite everyone out there to put their own two cents worth in. And maybe the, the roundtable is suggesting that cities also respond to this in a formal way. And I will get together with staff and see if there's any way we can, um, try to put our own spin on it where it's more directed from our community instead of from the entire roundtable. Some of the things will be very similar to roundtable responses, but I think that it's something that maybe if the citizens. But I think that it's something that maybe if the citizens feel that they have an ear to someone who may care, that they will, you know, take ownership of some of the noise and some of the complaints and, you know, how we can deal with this. But again, I think it's, it's important. It's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity from the FAA asking to get input from communities.
Yeah, no, I think that's excellent. You know, I mean, there's already routes that they can do that they've already implemented over the last several years that have been beneficial. When they, you know, now I forget the names of the runways, but the ones that, you know, they head north and then they make the turn, right? And, and, you know, we, we, when they would come over the mountain really close, we would call that the buzz cut, right? And we got a lot of the buzz cut with the, the work on the runways. But those planes can easily make the turn east, right, on the east side of 101. And that goes over industrial area and it doesn't impact anyone. The plane's heading east over the bay and making the turn. If you're out at Sarajevo Point, you can see a lot of those planes making the turn before they even get to Brisbane. But of course, then there's also, if you can't make that turn, okay, don't have it all come over one place. Spread it out, you know, so that everybody, you know, they share the load, but it isn't like so impactful. Okay, you get one plane or two planes and then, okay, you don't hear anything for a while because someone in San Francisco is getting it or someone in Daly City in Bay Shore is getting it. Yeah, so I mean, like, are they, you know, are they acknowledging that the, the routes that they've already established can work, but they're not using them for whatever reason?
Well, I mean, you were on this roundtable for a long time. And a lot of it is the airport itself is trying to encourage the planes to take off on certain runways and try to do the right thing on flying quiet. But once they get 10 or 12 feet off the ground, TRACON in Sacramento takes over the control and they can just send them anywhere they want. And they just, they just want to get them off their screen. And so try as hard as you want to get them to fly the prescribed routes. When there's heavy traffic, which we're back to heavy traffic, they, the air traffic controllers up in Sacramento are just gonna move them out to get them off their screen. And so it, it, it makes it very difficult for the body that we sit on in the airport to control how noise gets thrown out into the communities when they don't have any, there's no recourse for them flying the prescribed route because it's all about safety.
It's for sure.
It makes it very difficult. And yes, we have made, you know, we, we did get the FAA to, and the airport to work together, a route that goes up the bay and out the gate. And when they're able to utilize that route, it saves us a lot of noise. But again, that's only, the FAA only agreed to let them fly that route between 1:00 AM and 5:00 AM. Because that's when they consider noise to be really terrible for sleeping people. And 1 to 5 is not when, I mean, certainly it's when people are trying to sleep. But, you know, we would love to get that implemented in a wider timeframe.
And, and the majority of those planes are 11:45 when we're all just going to sleep. Are those heavy, old, noisy cargo planes from one of our favorite places we like to order goodies from. So maybe that's our next step is we don't order from those places to try and cut down on the aircraft. But they, and they don't care. They've been told a thousand times. I've reported one company many, many times.
The other thing that is happening and that was included on this survey is that they are going to be discussing supersonic because they are trying to get supersonic back. And they're going to be talking about drones. And they, they address some of that. And what the roundtable response on drones was that they don't recommend any unmanned package delivery between 8:00 PM and 8:00 AM. But that they are going to abdicate any regulation to the cities impacted themselves. So it would be up to Brisbane to say, no drone package deliveries. At all, or certain hours, or whatever they're gonna do. And that's gonna be, there, these are questions in this noise survey about these kinds of operation and air taxis, which are basic personal helicopters and what the noise will be.
Another factor, at least in the past, has been Oakland flights getting vector, like, you know, getting thrown off course early. TRACON's doing that with Oakland flights. Then you have to, they're managing all that airspace. So if an Oakland flight is not flying its waypoint, then that can cause SFO flights. So it's all, you know, then you have to vector those. You have to throw them on a different path too. So it's all interconnected. The waypoint that you're talking about over the bay and through the gate is that stick?
Yes. It's a different one. They're calling it, it goes out to Gobs. So it's got a different name. And I'm sorry, I'm blanking on the name right now.
It's all like foreign language, you know?
It's all in foreign language, yes. Anyway, that's my report out. And, and I just wanted to let them know about the FAA noise study.
I have a quick and fun report out.
Okay.
Okay, so a very quick and fun report out for everybody in the county is that the Sematell County Library GPA Board, of which I am the vice chair, we looked over our budget for over a month. And then on Monday, we approved that budget. And smcl.org, if people want to go look at that budget, shows some incredible new offerings to every single person in our county. And I really encourage everybody to go look at what's in that budget. And they're expanding services and looking for recommendations. So please take a look.
And then, you know, I had a committee.org meeting this morning. You know, I won't go into the details of the meeting, but this might be helpful for you, Colleen, with your PCE meeting. So we conducted the, the majority of the meeting that were members attended in the, the conference room at South San Francisco City Hall. But we also, bless you, we also had three members go to Menlo Park's council chamber. And they, and this is, you know, the existing Brown Act rules, right? Or if you're on vacation, right, you, you do the remote thing and put the notice outside. So we, we tried that and it worked really, really well. But of course, you know, they, they were on Zoom, those three in that location. The public could go there, right? So perhaps you might, there might be other members of PCE that are looking to do something somewhere. So you don't have to drive so far.
I, I can tell you that the legal counsel of PCE looked into that and legally, we are not allowed to do it. And, and several committees, different commissions around the state have said, well, we're just going to do it. But there's legislation pending. There's a bill going through that would allow that if you live 40 miles outside of where the meeting is taking place. PCE is 38 miles. And for most, and, and I'm probably the farthest in the county to travel.
Well, committee.org is the same, right? It's countywide. So, but we're just using existing Brown Act regulation, right? So this isn't pending legislation. This is existing. And our county council, Joan, I'm playing out Joan's last name. But she is okay with us doing that in a, in a public location as long as it's properly noticed. So.
The, the, the problem they ran into is it had to be either an emergency or it had to be.
You're on, you're traveling.
You're on, you're traveling on city business.
AB 22449.
Yes. So it, our legal counsel for PCE said it doesn't fall under any of them.
Yeah, and this, again, this is a, I know, I understand.
It's all up in the air. Thank you. I wish they would.
Brown Act regulations, right? Not, not the pending ones, not, you know, it's just the, the old ones. So, yeah. But it's not a Zoom meeting. It's, it's just a remote location. All right, that's it.
Okay. Do you have anything?
No.
Okay, so we'll move on to written communications.
Madam Mayor, we received written correspondence from Dana Dilworth regarding the planning commission comments, Nancy Laxman regarding the budget workshop, park and rec Sierra Point and Crocker Trail improvements. Michael Barnes, please forward to City Council regarding budget hearings. And Carolyn Monroe, request for funding bicycle features on Crocker Trail.
Okay. Oral communications, number two.
There are none, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I'll adjourn this meeting at 10:13.